Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's good to see you all here tonight. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for this Monday, April 3rd, 2023. Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Anderson has been excused. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Bokey?
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Here.
Member Lorisella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Here.
And Mayor Whalen?
Present.
You have a forum?
Thank you very much. So if you'd please stand and join me first in a moment of silence. You know, there's a lot of tragedy in the country these days with the tornadoes that have been devastating communities across the Midwest and the South, as well as the tragedy in Nashville, Tennessee. So our thoughts go out to all of those families affected. A moment of silence for them, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance Tornation's Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, its standards, its foundation, its undergoverned, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
First on the agenda tonight is our proclamation and presentation section. We're proud tonight to present a proclamation congratulating Jan Hutchins on her retirement from the LASSA organization and expressing our appreciation for the impact she's made on our entire Lakewood community. So I understand Ms. Hutchins is joining me virtually tonight, is that correct?
Mayor, that is correct.
So we'll get Jan on the screen and I'll take my position down at the podium down there and we'll have some time with Jan.
Jan, we do see you have virtually joined the meeting. You should be invited to join us on screen.
Okay, I think I fixed the sound.
Are you there, Jan?
I am here, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Jan, we are pleased tonight to present this proclamation to you on behalf of all of us here at the City Council, but certainly on behalf of this community, many of whom have watched you grow this organization to the successful one that it is today, in which you are working very hard to end homelessness in Lakewood, as well as in the surrounding community. So we want to thank you with this tribute to you tonight. And we know that your time with us may be short with LASSA, but we know that your heart is in this community and you continue to do amazing work on behalf of the Living Access Support Alliance, which impacts all of Lakewood favorably. So thank you for that, Jan. On behalf of the City of Lakewood, I present this proclamation. Whereas for more than a quarter of a century, Living Access Support Alliance, LASSA, its executive director, Jan Hutchins, has committed herself and her career to ending homelessness in Lakewood and the surrounding community. And whereas in 1997 Hutchins became LASSA's first full-time director, beginning her career with a nonprofit housing organization by operating out of a one-room office in the basement of St. Francis Cabrini and her car, which she used to run from location to location. And whereas with Hutchins' leadership and guidance, LASSA has grown from its humble start into an organization that specializes in supporting people experiencing homelessness by connecting them with various housing options and offering them wraparound support services, including a food pantry, a diaper closet, peer support, clothing, hygiene supplies, and holiday and back-to-school drives and giveaways. And whereas along with leading the LASSA organization, Hutchins has also tirelessly managed various programs such as rapid rehousing, emergency housing, peer support, case management, and rent and utility assistance. And in addition to her service to LASSA, Hutchins has served as adjunct faculty at Tacoma Community College, provided expert assistance to the Homeless and Domestic Violence Childcare Board, and the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium, organized state legislator health promotion events in Florida, South Carolina, and Georgia, and completed a health program marketing campaign for NBC TV that was featured in Newsweek. And whereas, under her direction, LASSA purchased numerous single-family homes and duplexes for their affordable housing program and a 14-unit Flat Meadows complex currently used as permanent housing that offers supportive services. And whereas Hutchins sponsored the creation of LASSA's Client Services Center on Gravel Lake Drive, as well as the 15-unit Prairie Oaks Development currently housing LASSA's permanent supportive housing program. And whereas, even as she prepares to leave her organization with LASSA, Hutchins continues to advocate for the next stage of development of this organization's Gravel Lake Commons project that would add 55 affordable apartments to Lakewood's targeted low-income households, as well as with other necessary services like a hygiene center that we look forward to opening later this summer. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council hereby congratulates Jan Hutchins on her well-deserved retirement, and we express our gratitude and appreciation for the lasting impact that Jan has made on those and the lives of those who live in the Lakewood community and beyond. So Jan, thank you for your incredible efforts and longevity with LASSA. We proclaim this proclamation in your honor this third day of April, 2023, signed by this crazy guy at the podium here, Jason Whalen, Mayor. So for all the work we've done together, Jan, I've enjoyed working with you and certainly in my official capacity, we've had great opportunities to connect and to advocate for the benefit of your program and the services it provides to many in the community. So thank you very much for your work. And if you were here, I'd hold this up and we'd take a photograph with you, but nonetheless, the floor is yours. If you have a few comments you'd like to express.
Yes, I would, and I appreciate that. And I'm sorry if I'm not there with you tonight. From Washington, DC, I believe, with COVID. Um, first of all, I want to say thank you for recognizing my service. And I want to acknowledge the city and the importance of helping LASSA and other nonprofits grow. And there's too many things to mention, so I'm just going to mention four things right now. The first, and maybe one of the most important, was the fact that with the 1% of general funds that you contribute to supporting human services, we got our, one of our very first grants, a very modest $15,000 grant. But I've said this many times before and I keep repeating it because it was such a critical part of our evolution. It enabled us to hire a part-time case manager, which then enabled me to try to help work and grow the rest of the organization. Secondly, you've been there with us, helping us meet our mission of prevention of homelessness and recurrent homelessness through regular, ongoing grants. Recently, the third point I'd like to mention is that you lent us Jeff Gum to help us on our search committee to find a new executive director. And his name is Jason Scales, and I'm going to be excited to bring him to you at a future city council meeting, or better yet, if he comes to our breakfast. And then last thing, I want to say thank you for including LASSA in Marathon Day on Capitol Hill, visiting lawmakers requesting funds for Gravel Lake Commons. We just heard from Maryland Strickland's office and the project is moving forward at the $2.5 million requested level. And so it's just been a very important partnership from the days of running around the city with Dave Buwer, looking at properties that needed lots of help. And us telling you about people that needed special help and you sharing stories with us. It's been a great partnership. And so I would like to say thank you, not only for myself, thank you for the organization, and thank you for the other nonprofit organizations that you've helped nurture. So thank you.
Well, you're very welcome, Jan, thank you. And all I can say is I'm glad we had smart shoes on when we were traipsing around Capitol Hill to pursue funding because we spent a lot of time running around. So thanks again for your help with that. Okay, so I will give the clerk the proclamation, Jan. She'll make sure it gets to you so you can enjoy it at the LASSA headquarters. Thank you again.
Thanks.
Next, we have a proclamation declaring April 22nd, 2023 as Parks Appreciation Day here in the City of Lakewood. And Vito Akakobazi, Yoko Bazi, from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, I'm always tripping on that. Vito, please join our council member, Tressen Lorisella, at the podium, and he will present the proclamation to you on behalf of the City of Lakewood. And I want to personally thank you again for your longstanding work on behalf of the Parks Board. You've done yeoman's work for us over many, many years. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Vito. Whereas, well-maintained parks and playgrounds, a variety of nature trails and open spaces, places to gather like community and cultural centers and historic sites make a city a desirable place to live, work, and visit. And whereas, parks are a place where a sense of community is created, where people can reflect, re-energize, or socialize, a place where everyone is welcome regardless of age, race, beliefs, or social and economic status. And whereas, parks and open spaces provide a welcome respite from today's fast-paced, high-tech lifestyle and contribute to our ongoing economic vitality and protect and preserve our natural environment. And whereas, on Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, volunteers of all ages will work at park sites around Lakewood, committing their time to clean up and beautify Fort Stillicum Park, Harry Todd Park, and the Lakewood Community Garden. And whereas, we could not do this annual cleanup and beautification work without the help of these hundreds of volunteers who step up year after year, representing our local businesses, community and civic groups, and churches and organizations to make sure our parks are ready for the busy spring and summer seasons. Now therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2023 as Parks Appreciation Day in the City of Lakewood and urges all residents to show support by volunteering on April 22nd at one of our park sites and to help beautify and protect our parks, proclaimed this third day of April, 2023.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor of City Council, this is a great privilege to be recognized, Parks Appreciation Day. This is at least 23 years Parks Appreciation Day, hundreds of volunteers per year. I remember the first year, I was still working at Metro Parks, but I wasn't participating in Parks Appreciation Day. But I was with Mary and we pulled out an old Pierce County playground out of Macte Park. And it was a lot of work, but I stuck it out and we did get rid of that old piece of playground and put in a new playground. So over the years, I mean, two decades, over two decades, we've been doing this. So it's a great honor. Thank you very much for recognizing Parks Appreciation Day. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Vito. We'll come down and have a quick photograph. And after 20 years, I think it's deserved. So there you go. Next on the agenda tonight is our Youth Council Report. We have Mr. Hank Jones in the audience for this. Thank you. Looking fine tonight with that new haircut, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I appreciate it, thank you. I wasn't sure if you'd noticed, but it means the world. So good evening to Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss, and the council. And congratulations, Councilman Lorisella. Am I pronouncing that right, Lorisella? All right.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. I'm sure you're looking forward to getting to know the Youth Council throughout your term, and we're looking forward to getting to know you. So my name is Hank and I'm here to present our Youth Council Report for the month of April. You know, I wish I could say more about the content, but the content will be a little light tonight. We haven't had too much going on, although we do have some things in the works. And I may give a more long-winded presentation in May, so just warning you now. Well firstly, the majority of us in the council are seniors. And so we've been really busy with scholarships and figuring out where we'll be going to school next year. I'm excited to be going to the University of San Francisco, and other members will be going to UW, WSU, and other schools. Brandon, my counterpart, is co-chair, won the Presidential Scholarship at UW, as you know, and has also been awarded the AWC Center for Quality of Community Scholarship. And then for non-seniors, there's still plenty of opportunity to go around. For juniors in the council have expressed interest in the Lakewood Rotary-sponsored Rural Affairs Seminar on Climate Change at Carroll University this summer. And as soon as our coordinator gets back, we will plan on nominating a few qualified names to the Rotary. We also heard a presentation at our meeting today on the Rotary Youth Leadership Award, or Ryla, to teach leadership development skills to leaders in the community. This is another opportunity that a good number of our council members have taken interest in. And we spent some time today planning how we can advertise this award to schools in Lakewood. And lastly, I can say that the Youth Council is looking forward to continuing to volunteer and to support the city at events throughout the remainder of our session. We have over a dozen volunteers that have signed up to help restore and beautify our parks on Parks Appreciation Day later this month. And next month, we will continue to work on projects such as our May Roundtable at Lakes High School and the Youth Summit in June. So thank you for your time. And with that, I can answer any questions about what we've been up to.
Any questions? Sounds like a full plate. How's the Youth Summit coming along?
Really good. So our coordinator unfortunately has been out sick for a minute. And so a lot of catching up to do when she gets back. You know, she's definitely like the glue that holds our organization together. And so we've been focused on other, you know, things on our plate for the time being. But in May and in early June, we'll iron out some of the finer details and we'll get that whole thing up and running.
Great.
Really excited about it.
Yeah, I think many folks are looking forward to it. So that'll be a great project for you.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm glad to hear there's interest in the Rotary, Ryla, and the Climate Change Conference. That'll be great.
Yeah, we just heard about Ryla tonight. Cameron Fairfield has been filling in for Shannon as a Youth Council Coordinator, and he gave us the whole rundown about the organization, the program. It sounds really fascinating.
Yeah.
And there's been a lot of interest on it within the council.
Very good, that's great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you again and thank those members who made an appearance last Friday at the Rotary Festival and Auction at McGamick Center because they really helped. And so that's why Rotary wanted to make sure that they were giving back to youth and making sure that these programs are available to you.
That was fun, thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
Always.
Okay, well, if there are other questions, then we will, I think, zoom in our Clover Park School District Board Member, Anthony Belize, is he appearing by Zoom? Madam Clerk?
Mayor, I don't see that he's appeared by Zoom yet at this time.
Okay, so not seeing Mr. Belize in the audience. We'll move for the moment to public comment. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or live virtual or in-person comment. Comments may be submitted in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, our city clerk, at 6,000 Main Street Southwest here in Lakewood, or at her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to an hour before the meeting have been provided to all of us electronically. But for the record, the clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Mayor, we received comments in advance from Casey Crook.
Thank you very much. I don't have a sign-in sheet with me. Let's see, there we go. Thank you. Members of the audience certainly may comment on items related to any comment or matter pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Comments are limited to three minutes per person. We ask that you identify your name and your general residence, such as Mr. Paul Bokey, Lakewood, Washington, and then proceed with your three minutes of public comment. Virtual comments are also appropriate during the public comment period. If you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, you can join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number on the screen, entering the Zoom meeting ID number and pressing the star nine raise the hand feature to be called upon. So what I first would like to do tonight is call on those who have signed in to speak here in the audience. Dr. Ursula Hall is first. And come on up to the microphone so we can create a record for you, Dr. Hall.
I've been living in Lakewood since 1975. The first 15 years, we lived on Dresden Lane. If you're not familiar with the area, it's just across from the park entrance, Fort Stillicum Park. I walk in the park every day. And therefore, I'm very familiar with the traffic around there and the entrance of the park. So Dresden Lane is only, if you're not familiar with it, a half circle of a street with very few houses. So the people living there hardly contribute to any kind of traffic. Then Elwood Lane, which goes from north to south along the park, also hardly has any traffic. I don't know if you ever drive there, but if you do, you probably notice. No pedestrians. Maybe I seen in all these years, two or three times, someone walking along there. Now, the city wants to build, I heard, a traffic circle right in front of Dresden Lane. And that was stated. And to build this circle, the city intends to cut down five beautiful Action Magazine, there was an article, a short one, "The City Likes to Increase the Tree Canopy in Lakewood." So this discrepancy really startled me, puzzled me. On the one hand, we want more canopy. On the other hand, we cut down trees. And that's not the only trees which have been cut down in Fort Stillicum Park. A few years ago, 150 trees were cut down. And now somebody, I don't know who, if the city even knows that, all the crambles were removed, which I have nothing against, along the lake, but also some trees again. So there is a difference between intention and action. And that's what I would like you to ponder about, what the city really wants and whom should we elect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rhea Baker.
I have been a resident for over 30 years. And you built a sidewalk on Phillips Road. To me, it's a puzzle why you built that on the side of the houses and not on the side of the trout hatchery. You had to remove two beautiful gary oaks for the sidewalk. While on the other side, on the hatchery, there are no trees. You could have built a sidewalk there. And then the trees would have been intact. I have the feeling that this council is anti-tree. I mean, the golf course, they removed over 400 trees and nobody protested. So what do you do? Do you want to improve your canopy? Or do you let everybody just chop the trees? In replanting, I noticed in Fort Stillicum Park, you removed 140 trees. And I have counted about 10 trees that have been replanted. Now, where is the rest? So I would like to know why you built that sidewalk on the side of the houses and not on the other side, where no trees had to be removed. Thank you.
Next is Casey Crook.
My name is Casey and Lakewood is my home. I would like to continue to challenge the authenticity of the intentions of the Pierce County Library System as related to the City of Lakewood's community library buildings and services. I would like to point out that the county library system has been planning their own version of a new Lakewood library building for a very long time and that their public claims of this being a reflection of what Lakewood citizens have communicated wanting are dishonest and contrived. The accurate reality is that PCLS long ago prioritized their very own preferences in planning for a new Lakewood library and later began attempting to convince the public that such designs were something which arose naturally by means of considering public input. The Pierce County Library System has shown that they are not interested in genuine, meaningful partnership with Lakewood residents in determining and representing the wants and needs of our community. They intend only to produce the false appearance of doing so while determined to extract from Lakewood's well of resources exactly what they have planned for themselves from the very beginning. And speaking with hundreds of Lakewood folks over the last year, it has been voiced by a majority of Lakewood citizens that they do not trust either the Pierce County Library System or the City of Lakewood to do right by their social or financial interests. Lakewood residents do not believe that they are sincerely welcome to interact with cooperative efforts which allow them to participate meaningfully within their community. Lakewood residents do not trust either the city or county leaders to demonstrate a high degree of professional capability in prioritizing the preservation and prudent spending of their hard-earned community dollars in a time of economic uncertainty. I am here to demonstrate to Lakewood friends and neighbors that it is possible for civic engagement within Lakewood to be a healthy and productive agent toward achieving authentic and actualized community growth. I am here to encourage our city leaders to rise above the dysfunction and dormancy of the status quo, which enables those in positions of power to falsely represent the interests of the people in order to fulfill self-serving agendas on our dime and at our expense. I am here to offer good vibes of support and appreciation to any and every city leader for any and every authentic action taken, proving their diligence in working toward an ever higher standard of honest intentions and moral integrity for the City of Lakewood. Thank you.
Next is Tamara Cook.
Hi, I'm Tamara Cook. I'm a Lakewood resident and I had a whole bunch to say, but now it's a little bit but now it's a little bit changed, so please bear with me. Systems that fail, systems that survive, they give back, okay? We have a homeless situation. We live in a capitalistic economy. There's always going to be homeless, always. For there's as many reasons for homelessness as there are shapes of clouds in the sky. The best thing we can do is we can, we can set up a system that makes it so that we don't have so many casualties. All right, that's the best thing we can do. And to help them navigate out of it. I come from a long line of homeless people. My family was in constructions, Nuki, Nomad, highway construction, whatever. It's always going to be with us. Homelessness in a capitalist economy is always going to be here. Systems that don't give back, they don't live. We're talking about trees. I've got a bicycle full of seeds in the back. When I first moved here, there were no birds in my community. I buy seeds. I planted sunflowers on the side of my building. There was no organisms in the soil. We, we need old-growth trees. It's important, just like we need our homeless people. They do have something to contribute. My biggest topic right now is privacy in our telephone systems. This is not a system that's going to give back to us. It does not give back to us. It asks us to check a box. We don't know who the administrator is. It could be Osama bin Laden. We don't know. None of you people probably know who your administrator is. You don't know if your dad is being sold and who it's being sold to. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I have a phone bill here. It has no tax ID on it. It has no license number on it. Who are these people? Are they even based in the United States? Here's another one. Same thing, nothing, nothing, T-Mobile. So how can we control our economy and help our own people? I think we have to do it by setting up systems that are going to support all of us. Okay, it's really important. I can't even get on a bus because I don't have a bus book. I can't get on the internet because I, I, I keep getting hijacked. And it's because I know so much. It's like, we don't want this doll. Let's get her off the system. I can't get, if I get rid of my phone, I can't have insurance. My parcy insurance is no good because we have no brick and mortar insurance companies that, that will take care of us. Systems that don't give back fail, all right?
Thank you.
That's where we're at right now. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Next, James Dunlop.
Hi, my name is James Dunlop and I am a Lakewood resident. I had a history teacher who, he was a very good teacher, and he told the class different way, how to write an essay, specifically how to write the first paragraph of a history essay. And he came up with various possibilities. And one possibility he came up with is if you're going to describe something, you start with a structure or perhaps a work of art. So if you want to talk about Russia, you might talk about the Trans-Siberian Railway. Or France, you might talk about the Eiffel Tower or the United States, the Statue of Liberty. Which brings us to Lakewood. So let us say you were going to write an essay. Account for the decline of Lakewood since its incorporation as a city in 1996. And you were going to start your essay. Where would you start? Well, you might start with a new work of art in the Colonial Center. And somehow that work of art may describe something about Lakewood. I think it would describe something about the weakness of Lakewood's government, Lakewood's city council. You know, I saw videos of the city, of you, the councillors, sorry to address you, reacting to that work of art. I got the impression you didn't like it. The mayor described it as dragon's teeth. You know, if you'd wanted tank traps, you could have probably got them from JBLM almost for free. And you, you have been, you were acting as if something had come from space. And it wasn't your fault. And now Lakewood has to deal with it. And because of the sunken cost of $140,000, you had to pretend that it was somehow worthy, when in fact, it's not. And it summarizes your weakness we see with, Casey has just talked about the Pierce County Library System. You have shown weakness in just, well, we can't do anything about it. It's the Pierce County Library System. Of course, you could have done something about it. If you'd voted to de-annex straight away, you would have found that things had changed, even if you weren't actually going to go through with de-annexation as the former mayor said, it would have been powerful leverage. Likewise, developers, we can't do anything about it. Likewise, you know, when city bureaucrats recommend that you choose one hearing examiner over another, you probably don't even think about why they're, why they're asking you to choose one, one hearing examiner after another. So while I don't like that work of art on the Colonial Plaza, maybe at some level, it's accurately describing the city.
Thank you. Next is Christina Minetti.
Hello, Christina Minetti, Lakewood. The Soviet Union, in the Soviet Union, inconvenient holidays were eliminated and reinvented as communist ones. So instead of Santa Claus, they had Jed Maros, grandfather Frost. And a certain item in this week's agenda was reminiscent of such tactics, or of 1984, if you know that book better. The whole world celebrates Earth Day on April 22nd. In Lakewood, however, the city council celebrates Parks Appreciation Day. No mention is made in the proclamation of the fact that it is in fact Earth Day. Through it, Lakewood negates Earth Day, implicitly telling residents to worry only about the environment in terms of human comfort, and of course, they could try to rustle up some volunteers. Okay, it might be nice to have a Parks Day, but why not let Earth Day be in the spotlight on its day? It seems that the spotlight has been intentionally diverted onto the city itself. It seems that there has never been an Earth Day proclamation, but correct me if I'm wrong. Parks Appreciation Day is also problematic anyway. Since the parks are run by the city, the city is in fact celebrating itself and its so-called accomplishments in the parks. So let's look at what some of these are. There are the dubious improvements to Fort Stilicon Park. Everyone knows that paved surfaces should be rejected in favor of permeable surfaces. The city paved over a large gravel parking lot that was there since I was a kid. It cut down huge numbers of trees, somewhere which shaded the water body, providing habitat to get rid of the toxic algae. There were two alum treatments, i.e. a poison at high dosages in 2020, that have apparently essentially caused life to cease in the lake. The city was warned this would happen. $25,000 is again put aside to do this again. It hasn't recovered from the first time, and now they're going to do it again to make this lake safe for human visitors and their pets, and to get rid of those embarrassing warning toxic algae signs. The lake has been poisoned. Then there have been the wards-like improvements, more impervious surfaces, including a frivolous prefab pump track so you can ride your bike without even pedaling. What's the purpose of that? And more pavement and a dog park so that excrement can filter into the ground near the body of water and hopefully enter it. The park's natural wetland habitat has already been turned into a civilized lawn with can of goose poop all over it. There's also a pedestrian bridge in the works so garbage can more easily be tossed into the water body and so that it will be also inappropriately shaded. There's also the unbelievable proposal to give away a great swath of Fort Stilicon Park to Pierce College Fort's baseball fields. There'll be toxic astroturf associated with various cancers such as lymphoma and brain cancer in athletes from elementary school students through pro baseball. Even Tacoma is installing one made of olive pits instead, but not Lakewood. Doesn't Lakewood's council see what it's doing? Many concerned Lakewood residents asked that the city council step up to what should be its role as steward of Lakewood's environment, informed by the best available science, instead of blindly grabbing some sexy-looking plan that they think might make them more popular in the eyes of the uninformed masses. City Council, please stop allowing dumb things. It is excruciating to watch.
Well, rather than be excruciating, that's the last individual who signed up to speak to the council during the public comment period in person. If anyone else is here who has yet to address us during the public comment period, please feel free to step up to the podium. Otherwise, we'll turn to those who are present virtually. Madam Clerk.
Dennis Haugen.
Mr. Haugen.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Dennis Haugen from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Used to be a resident there until three years ago. Actually, a downward spiral that metropolitan areas seem to be going through of what you're part of, most, much of it is pushed by the federal government and state government and even the county governor, government. In order for you to stop the homeless situation or get it back to some reasonable normalcy, the wall must continue to be built. You are affected by the wall. So the only way you can work on that is the politicians you elect to Washington. And another thing that creates homelessness is debit cards. Now, a lot of cities don't have as big a problem as you do. I think Washington, Oregon, and California will have the toughest time wiping out homelessness because you have weather that is survivable pretty much all year round. Whereas places like Florida have got, not only the weather, but they've got alligators and pythons and whatnot. Whereas along the west coast, it's just very easy to live outside. You take your ABT card and you go get a tent and sleeping bags and you're ready to live outside. And that, of course, in order to understand that, you would have to create an audit. And audit the state and the federal government to make sure the money is going to feed people. Another problem that contributes to homelessness is your school system. You forever have your best students up here. It's like theater. But I wouldn't allow the school board to even talk to you unless they come in and start talking about how they're going to teach the kids that are in the low test scores and how they're going to reach them. That's where all the focus and energy should be. And of course, we also, well, we need math. You know, that comes an advantage to bureaucrats because they don't have any math. They can't reasonably think things through and then they're available to be indoctrinated. But there's a whole long list of things that you're going to have to do, or you will continue to spiral downward. I've got some videos there that I left there, or you saw. One of them is building the wall, Fisher. See, I showed that.
Very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that's the last hand I see raised for virtual public comment. Are there any others that you see that wish to address the council during the virtual public comment period?
Mayor, there are no virtual hands raised at this time.
Therefore, I'll declare the public comment period closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council special meeting of March 13th, 2023. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of March 13th, 2023. C, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of March 20th, 2023. D, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $1,968,936.38 for the period of February 23rd, 2023 through March 15th, 2023. E, approval of payroll vouchers in the amount of $2,914,847.05 for the period of February 16th, 2023 through March 15th, 2023. F, motion number 2023-37, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement with Pierce County for fingerprint and firearm services. G, motion number 2023-38, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Doolittle Construction LLC in the amount of $366,273.50 for the 2023 chip seal program. H, motion number 2023-39, authorizing AVESEC as an information technology IT managed services provider. I, motion number 2023-40, approving the purchase of CrowdStrike security systems and services. J, motion number 2023-41, approving the purchase of a storage system for the disaster recovery site. K, items filed in the office of the city clerk, one, community services advisory board meeting minutes of November 21st, 2022, and two, planning commission meeting minutes of March 1st, 2023.
Very good. Any item which any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, to have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I move. Second.
It's been seconded, correction, moved by council member Brand Center, seconded by Deputy Mayor Moss, that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted as presented. We turn to the regular agenda. I see no unfinished business. Mr. Coffield?
There's none, Mayor.
Any new business?
Not this evening, Mayor.
No, we'll proceed to reports by the city manager. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members, and full of updates. I'd like to suggest at your next regular meeting on Monday, April 17th, since we have a new council member, to do a group picture and just thinking about 6:30 for your, again, April 17th meeting, if that would work for everybody. And Mayor, unless I hear otherwise, we'll go ahead and plan for that accordingly.
Very good.
I know recently you received an update on what's going on in Western State Hospital, and one of those issues was to create a temporary access point on Silicon Boulevard and Chapel Road. Wanted to let you know that DSHS has gotten back with our Public Works Engineering Department with an interlocal agreement to have the city do it, however, for DSHS to pay for it. And so we'll be bringing forward that ILA for your review and consideration, probably in the next four to six weeks or so. So just wanted to follow up with you on a previous discussion that we had. I also want to take an opportunity to commend our Assistant City Manager and Community and Economic Development, Dave Buher. As you know, Dave has been with the city essentially since day one of incorporation. And he, you know, to say he's hardworking is probably a bit of an understatement. Dave is also the keeper of a lot of the history of the city since it is incorporated. And as a part of that, you know, one of the things that he oversees, of course, is land use and all the regulations and things along those lines. So he knows what's going on with various properties. Recently, down in the Woodbrook area, there's a property, a mobile home park, called Wagon West Mobile Home Park. And they were having some challenges in terms of being able to maintain their site and this, that, and the other thing. And in summary, Mr. Buher, working with the new property owner, has been able to develop an agreement with the homeowners association so that they can continue in perpetuity as a non-conforming use on that site. And quite frankly, without Mr. Buher's intervention here, who knows what would have happened? You know, the mobile home park, quite frankly, could have gone away. And then where would those individuals and those families have, have gone? And because of his involvement and his expertise, he was able to work with the property owner and the folks that live there to upgrade and replace their septic system as well as upgrade their water lines, both which were suffering quite badly, to say otherwise. Also, he worked with the property owners to, I'm going to list them off here, obtain correct titles for each of the mobile homes, working to remove abandoned and derelict trailers, evicting, worked with LPD to evict drug dealers, cleaned up the site with a lot of junk that was there, commissioned an abandoned well, and also had the mobile home park owners obtain a no trespass agency agreement from, from LPD. And basically, he got to the point leveraging all the policies that you have put in place, not just our non-conforming codes, our building codes, our property maintenance code, our abatement, public nuisance code, and our rental housing safety program, in a very creative approach to come to this conclusion to, again, allow these folks to stay there in perpetuity. Mr. Buher has been working with them and they have put together, Dave has said, a very nice PowerPoint presentation, kind of illustrating what they have accomplished. And Mr. Buher has asked maybe at some time in the future to be able to bring that forward to all of you, to share that with you. As well as the park residents have an interest in coming out and showing their appreciation for what Mr. Buher has done. So I know a lot of times this stuff kind of flies under the radar, but just wanted to recognize what Mr. Buher has done there. Also, on the economic development front, I think earlier this year, we had been notified. Also, on the economic development front, I think earlier this year, we had been notified by Kite Realty, one of the new property owners in the town center, that they had chosen legacy partners to partner with them to develop some mixed use on what we call the back forty. And what we learned recently is that they have pivoted a little bit, actually not a little bit, a lot of bit. And they have chosen another developer. They have moved on from legacy partners. And they just recently informed the city that that new partner is Alliance Residential Company. They're actually headquartered out of Scottsdale, Arizona. However, they have a pretty significant footprint here in the Pacific Northwest, particularly Western Washington, having done development of mixed-use projects and housing in areas such as Furcrest, Kent, Seattle, Redmond, Vancouver, Tukwila, and Bellevue, to name a few. Our economic development manager, who has gotten to know the company, is very, very excited and think they'll be a great asset for our community. They are now working with Kite to secure actually a portion of that property. It's about ten acres. And then once they have that, they'll come talk to the city about what they want to do in terms of building something there. We continue to have our dialogue with Kite about also incorporating some kind of a public park within our downtown as well. So just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up that we had communicated it was going to be one new developer. Now it's somebody different. Also, wanted to let you know, I know Hank was here earlier from the youth council, but another member of the youth council, Brandon Elliott, was selected by the Association of Washington Cities, their quality communities, as a awardee of their Quality Community Scholarship, totaling twenty-five hundred dollars. And I think usually award about five or six years. So this is a great honor for Brandon to be able to secure this scholarship. And of course, that doesn't come without the support of the mayor and the council. So that scholarship will officially be presented to Brandon as well as the other recipients as part of the AWC conference in Spokane, the latter part of June. Also, wanted to let you know, and I know she had mentioned this earlier, that after our visit to Washington DC a couple of weeks ago, that Congresswoman Strickland has selected the LASSA affordable housing property as one of her fifteen projects that she has moved forward to the full Congress for funding. It's one of her fifteen projects. And again, that's a great partnership that we have with LASSA and a lot of work that we've done, both on the city side and on the LASSA side. So now it's in the hands of Congress. And I know our Congresswoman and our two senators will be advocating for that funding as they look to develop the federal budget between now and the end of the year. I'd also like to commend and recognize our Assistant Police Chief, John Unfred, who worked tirelessly in updating the Pierce County Sheriff vehicle pursuits study that was done at the direction of the Pierce County Audit Committee and our Performance Audit Committee. And long story short, they got the data from Lakewood terribly wrong. However, Assistant Chief Unfred was able to work with the staff as a part of that committee to get all of the right information and get, as it relates specifically to Lakewood. In summary, also Assistant Chief Unfred was asked to make a presentation of the updated study and report to the committee about a week and a half ago. And he went there and did that. He was very well received by the members of the Pierce County Council who sit on that committee. And what he ended with was, you know, we can't ignore the fact that vehicle thefts have spiked exactly at the same time that House Bill ten fifty-four took effect, which is where reasonable suspicion was taken away from police officers as it relates to a wide range of criminal activity in Washington State. He also pointed out, and again, the data doesn't lie, that Washington State ranked third in the country for total vehicle thefts. We are now one of the leaders in that area. But again, overall, the Assistant Chief was praised for being able to come out and right-size that study and that report, again, as it relates to the city of Lakewood. In two thousand twenty-one, the city council appropriated almost eighty thousand dollars in ARPA funds in support of the installation of hand washing stations at five city parks. And, you know, at the time, that seemed like the right thing to do, hand washing statements at some of our parks. However, what we have learned as we're moving forward with trying to implement the first one, which is at Springbrook Park, is because of the regulations that are now in effect, we've got to connect the sewers, you've got to have a cover, and the list goes on. And so two things. One is the funding doesn't cover that. You know, the project costs would probably be five, six times what would have been allocated there. And then, quite frankly, I don't think there is a need for hand washing stations at these parks. And so our recommendation is to keep that funding within the parks program. And our recommendation is that those dollars be reallocated to help fund the American Lake Park expansion project that we're going to be kind of right sizing the budget here in the near future. So unless there's any objection from the council, that's what we wanted to do. Of course, it's at city council's discretion. But again, the objective is to keep the funding within the parks program. Of course, if the council wants to do something else with that money, that's certainly your prerogative. But just wanted to share that with you. Likewise, if you did really want to have the hand washing stations, we can certainly do that. But again, the cost would be probably about a hundred thousand dollars per hand washing station per park. Also, on the federal funding side, the Puget Sound Regional Council reached out to us and they have two updates for us. One is that they asked us if we could move up spending some of the federal grant monies that they have awarded a little bit sooner from two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four in support of One Hundred Street from Lakeview Drive to South Tacoma Way. Kind of that area as you come in off of South Tacoma Way. So we have said absolutely, yeah, we can get a jumpstart on that. And the reason being, because if we can get it designed in the next two years, then we can apply for construction for the next major cycle of federal funding. And then also, one of our contingency projects, some money's freed up. And they let us know that a project that we had applied for last year that we didn't get funding at the time, which is the design of Military Road from Edgewood to One Hundred and Twelve, which is really a continuation of Washington Boulevard as it turns into Military all the way up to One Twelfth. They have also let us know that contingency funds are available and we have been awarded a three hundred and eleven thousand dollar grant to do the design on that. So we'll get underway with that work later this year and into two thousand twenty-four. And again, that potentially is a project that we'll be able to seek construction funds for as the next cycle potentially of PSRC funding. So, and if not this time, then the next time. So some good news there. Also, the Public Works Engineering Department is, we've been in contact with Puget Sound Energy. You know, Puget Sound Energy is one of our three electrical providers here in Lakewood. The other two are Tacoma Public Utilities and Lakeview Light and Power. And they have notified us that they have installed the necessary hardware to allow the city, if we wish, to dim streetlights during certain times of the day, like for example, from ten PM to six AM. And they have done that with about seventeen hundred streetlights at their cost. They use some federal funds to be able to do that. And so they're now reaching out to us. And actually, this is the first place, as far as we know, that they have done it. Nobody has undertaken this dimming project. So we are in the process of evaluating it and really evaluating it on two fronts. One is to see if it has an impact on neighborhood security. Some of the information that we have been able to receive so far is that so long as lights aren't dimmed below about sixty or fifty percent, it's really not noticeable. And then secondly, if the lights were to be dimmed during that period of time, what would the cost savings be? Also, the dimming of the lights can be done in a way that, the way PSC has set it up, it can be done by an individual light, it can be done by a block, it can be done by a whole neighborhood, or it could be done by their whole service area. So just wanted to let you know that that's something that we're working on. And once we have some more concrete evidence on the pros and cons on that, we'll bring that back to you for your review as well. And one of the things that we're contemplating is maybe doing a pilot program or two just to get some basic data and information on how it works. On your calendar, our community cleanup, our spring cleanup is scheduled for April fifteenth and the sixteenth. I think the fifteenth is still tax day for most people. So the fifteenth and the sixteenth, from eight AM to two PM over at the Waste Connections Transfer Station. And if any of you are interested in volunteering, please let us know. We're always looking for volunteers to help facilitate that event. And then, as noted earlier, you have your annual Parks Appreciation Day on April twenty-second. And then later on in the month, on April twenty-sixth, LASSA is having their fundraising breakfast event at nine AM over at, I'm sorry, at seven thirty AM over at the McGavick Center. Real quick, on the state legislative front, I know you had some really good meetings back in Washington DC, you know, the mayor and the deputy mayor. And I would define that as really, those are some really good meetings. We had some good, we had some positive outcome on all of that. Likewise, at the state level, the state is beginning to wrap things up, the state legislature. As of today, they have twenty days left in the session to get things, to get their budget all finalized, their operating budget, their transportation budget, and their capital budget. For the city of Lakewood, so far financially, from a financial standpoint, we're doing very well. Our state capital budget requests that our state legislators are sponsoring are moving forward. We had requested two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in partnership for some historical and cultural improvements, recognizing the Squali Indian Tribe at Fort Silicon Park. Both the Senate and the House include three hundred and nine thousand dollars. Likewise, our request for funding for LASSA is also in there. The Senate has proposed four hundred and sixty thousand and the House has proposed five hundred thousand. We had asked for five hundred thousand. Also, in the operating budget, our Western Washington State Hospital Community Partnership Program, both chambers funded it at six hundred and twenty-one thousand. However, the Senate budget, actually the House budget, does reflect the city's request in budget proviso language that the program be based on services provided as opposed to FTE. So we're hoping as part of the reconciliation that we'll get that as well. And then also, the state legislature, in terms of how they have funded their grant programs in support of parks and recreation, the city is looking to receive, let's see, almost over two million dollars in support of Ward's Lake Phase Two, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for pickleball courts at Harry Todd Park. And also, on the Senate side, SSMCP, working in partnership with them, nine hundred thousand dollars for our North Clear Zone and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a statewide military and defense sector economic impact analysis. However, the House side on those latter two items did not include any funding. So from that perspective, things are moving forward. And I know, you know, the Blake Bill is moving forward, the True Blood Bill, the Vehicle Pursuits Bill. There's something moving forward on that. Kind of another bill that's on the back burner, that's of interest to us, that we have been promoting and supporting for a number of years now, is a fix to the tax increment financing program, specifically allowing the relocation and construction of a government-owned facility. In our particular situation, it will be the Wash Dot facility out on Pack Highway, to be included as an eligible project. That's something that we have been advocating for a number of years. Actually, it got left out when the original bill was proposed. And that's in this fix that is moving forward in both the House and the Senate. So overall, you know, some very good news on state front. So with that, I think that's enough. And certainly, Mayor, if there's any questions, I can try and answer.
Well, thank you very much. Any questions of Mr. Coffield? Looks like the Alliance organization looks to be a pretty well-skilled company, looking at their projects around the country. And it sounds like they're doing some work in Kent. So they have a local presence for sure. So it'll be good to hear more about that. Anything else for Mr. Coffield? If not, then we'll turn to council comments. Short evening, Mr. Boke.
Had a good time on Saturday. I thought the staff did a good job and the artist was very gracious. I enjoyed it.
Mr. Branstad.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I participated in a subcommittee of shape that was reviewing the applications that came for individuals that wanted to be on the advisory committee regarding housing, which was something that is in the ILA in terms of forming that organization. And they were looking to have an advisory committee that was balanced with developers, that land use, practitioners of various sorts, and consumers of affordable housing. So we did do that and we did move forward and agreed to a recommended list of nineteen members for that committee, one of whom is from Lakewood. Others who are, in their professional lives, deal with things in Lakewood, but don't reside here. So that recommendation is going to move forward to the full executive committee of shape, which, since he is back, Mr. Boke will be dealing with that here on this Friday. So we'll go forward, but that is indication of the evolution of that organization to begin to do ever more meaningful work in terms of housing regionally. And then, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask that we bring back the non-motorized transportation plan for another review at a study session. When we reviewed it at our last study session, quite honestly, I personally didn't think that I had enough time to really look at it in detail. And as I have since our study session, I have some other things that I think that I would at least like to know before we move forward in implementing it, particularly since it seemed from the presentation that it wasn't going to get another review. And we went from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twenty-three to review what was originally supposed to be a six-year plan. And so I think we need to do a good job of that. A couple of things that I really would want to get a chance to learn more about is, it seemed to be developed primarily using a tool called the Pedestrian Proximity Index that gave certain weights to certain types of streets and roads and moving forward. But I didn't understand exactly why things were weighted where they were and exactly how, when you took a specific project, what projects had what points. The other thing was, it seemed to me that there were, when we did the plan in two thousand and nine, which was just immediately before I came on the console, but it was looked at in my, for my first few weeks of when it was finally put together, you know, that there was some analytical work that was like was done this time, but that projects were also weighted with about thirty-five percent of the weight in terms of evaluating projects on that was a local evaluation, self-evaluation of projects and needs. And this plan that we were briefed on, they decided to not use the thirty-five points that the previous plan used, which were input regarding the local assessment of needs in terms of being able to go that and do that. And I think that there are some projects that maybe we, with the input from citizens and our knowledge of our neighborhoods, want to add on. And Mayor, I appreciate that last week you gave me an opportunity at the end to sort of point a couple out and I did the best that I could on the spur of the moment. But I think that there are some others, if we collectively give it a thought, to include having all seven of us instead of just five of us there to do that. I mean, just this evening, the city manager has told us we've received funding to design the improvements along Military Road from Edgewater. from Edgewater around to 112th Street. And yet, that is a project for sidewalk, which is a heavily walked area that is also a bus route where people have to move along it to get to it. And it wasn't included at all in the draft plan that we first reviewed. So I think that we can do some improving to it if we take another look at it and perhaps individually provide the Public Works Engineering staff some comments that we really like them to look at and draft to be able to go and do that. And we'll still be able to get it done this year. But I think it deserves our best attention.
I have no particular problem with that. If we have some consensus to bring it back for another study session, do we have time to do that, Mr. Coffield? I'm sure we do. We don't have any rush to adopt the non-motorized transportation plan, except before the end of the year, correct?
So as far as adopting it, the plan has been adopted. It was adopted in 2009.
This is an update.
This is an update. There has been no change or policy change to the document. And I know that was, I know Mr. Bucic walked you through on that. Now, for some reason, you want to take action on the updated plan, you could certainly do that. But I'll leave it to the council. If you want to schedule that as a future study session, we can do that.
You can always further update the update, right, based on some comments?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. And, you know, and that non-motorized plan, you know, is something, it's, you know, it's part of the larger TIP, but as far as what gets done, in terms of what gets built, that's your biennial capital improvement plan.
Absolutely. Well, let's set it up unless there's any objection for a further study session sometime probably when we're all here. We can take a look at that in June, sometime or July.
So you do have, your study sessions, as you know, fill up very quickly. So my question for you is, how high of a priority do you want to make this? Because then we can bump other things. I know the council has been clear with me, you don't want an overloaded study session because that's your opportunity to really chew on two to three major items a meeting.
I would think this item would probably deserve a two-hour block at time, probably. Yes. And then Councilmember Bell has a quick question.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question on it. So this is a plan that has already been adopted in 2009. What we're hearing are just updates. So I'm wondering, what is it that we're reviewing? Is it you want to make updates to the updates? Or that's my, I'm just wondering what, what you're looking for from this, since this plan has already been approved?
Go ahead, Mr. Branstadter, if you have a sponsor.
Well, from my perspective, one of the elements of the update was a, additions to the list of projects to be able to go and do that. The other thing is that the updates used a different methodology than in 2009 in some respects, to be able to go and do that, and that it disregarded using elements of local assessment and it just used a a plan that is sort of a generic engineering rubric about where a generic city should put sidewalks, given what sidewalks it already has, to be able to go and do that. I personally would not necessarily, I certainly did not like the process of doing an update that is, I don't know how long the update has got to last. It really didn't specify. You know, we have been wanting to update it for four years. And it's, again, it was something to try to get the time to do that and going on. And I think that there are some, some elements of the list that that are policy changes that maybe we want to make, given our experience since 2009 and where we are and what we want to do. An example that I would see is there seems the plan has a high over-reliance on using Cheryl lanes to provide bicycle mobility. Okay. And yet, I think that we've had some Cheryl lanes and that experience over the years in terms of feedback that I've gotten from people is drivers don't like them because they think they're abused by bicyclists. Bicyclists don't like them because they think drivers don't view their safety. Maybe it's kind of like the traffic circle thing. But also that a lot of bicyclists avoid them. They don't, they don't think that they actually add or make a, or make a major arterial just by painting Cheryl's on the, on the pavement, make it a safe place to bicycle. And they're definitely not, so they're not, they're not utility, but for us to beat our chests and say, we've got all these bicycle routes because we painted Cheryl lines on a lot of, on a lot of streets. And in some cases, we did that without any real regard to wanting to provide bicycle mobility. But our policy was to do that because if the agency that we wanted to improve the street, then you can only apply for the grant if you're going to make allowance for bicycles in the, but I think we need to decide, do we want 75 to 80% of our bicycle route infrastructure to be Cheryl's, which is what the plan really sort of indicates when I read it and do, you know, what math I can apply to it without going to calculus. So I think, I think that I think that there could be some differences to the plan, but I think there could be some differences in methodology that would apply to an update that the same, it may vary from what we saw and doesn't need in 2009.
Well, I think we can certainly have a conversation. So if we can carve out a two-hour block, Mr. Coffield, on a future study session, we can dig into that, at least take a look. The issue, I don't want to get off topic too far, but the issue of Cheryl lanes is usually one of trying to accommodate funding requests that have strings attached with available infrastructure and right-of-way. And it's really challenging in many instances to have dedicated bike lanes in a city that's got really limited right-of-way. So the Cheryl is the, you know, choice de jour in many situations, but it's certainly worth a conversation to take a look at it. I don't think that's a problem. So you can balance it out, as long as you don't have an evening that's like eight hours in a study session, which is your norm. If we can limit it to two or three good topics, you know, a couple of hours each. I'm kidding. Yeah.
Oh, you're serious?
Yeah.
So, so if we don't change the priorities that we have coming forward to you right now, we can do it on June 26th. But if you want to do it sooner.
Yeah, that's fine. Does that work? Does that give us enough time to take a look at it? It should. And then maybe what we can do is have little charts.
I guess. Is that the week of the AWC Conference starts the next day?
I don't know offhand. I can't remember if it's the third week or the last week. I can't remember offhand.
Yeah. And I was going to ask the question about the AWC Conference, if the clerk could remind us the dates of that. So those of us who want to attend, we just got to make sure it's on our calendar. I know it's later June. I just forgot off the top of my head what dates they were.
It's Tuesday, the 20th through Friday, the 23rd. But really, the bulk of it is Wednesday and Thursday, and then Friday morning.
Got it. So that would be the prior week to the Island Day night. Okay. Yep. All right. Very good. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I too attended the public art installation on Saturday, and I thought it was amazing. It was great to hear from the artists, see the Arts Commission there. And then I wanted to compliment staff on that for putting that together. And also wanted to compliment our communications staff on their really fun April Fool's post. I thought that that was really good, had a lot of really good engagement. It did what it needed to do. It got people's attention and they will be there to listen when we, the city of Lakewood, have really important things to say. So I liked that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Laura Sella.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also was at the event on Saturday and I was really impressed with the turnout of our community. We had lots of people there, including folks from the city itself, employees and the public as well. So it was great. I was able to attend the Arts Commission meeting today with Patty. That was really good. I look forward to hearing more about their review process as things come through. I think that's really important to understand how items come into the commission and how we decide what we're going to do out there. And Councilmember Bell, I was also going to compliment our Communications Department on the April Fool's joke that they put out there. They had me at first, but I quickly realized what the intent was. And I think it's good to have a little levity and humor and personality in our social media. Thank you.
Absolutely. Levity and humor is always welcomed on occasion. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just too wanted to compliment the turnout for the arts ribbon cutting with the weather, the way it was. I think we had a good turnout, the presentation and the comments that I got from a lot of the residents that were there, but they appreciated the efforts that we put forward to make our city what they wanted to be. So I thought that was good. Other than that, I just will be attending the Lakewood Promise Board meeting on Thursday morning, 7:30.
Which one?
At Lakewood Promise Board.
Oh, great. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll echo the comments on the public art unveiling on Saturday. I thought staff did a fabulous job of putting that together. I also want to compliment our communications team grimly in addressing issues of concern raised by well-meaning folks in the community prior to the event and doing a good job with that. And I think it went off well. My takeaway is that we can always be ever diligent, but we should remain steadfast in pursuing our council goals and objectives of making a culturally vibrant community through many means, including public art. And so those of you who are serving on the Arts Commission as liaison know how important it is for those members of the community and certainly the community at large. And thriving communities celebrate and embrace public art. And we must continue to march forward, notwithstanding the constructive feedback we get on occasion, which is, can be good feedback, but we march forward. AWC Conference, I just put a plug there. So those of us who wish to attend, Mr. Coffield, did we just advise Ms. Schumacher about that? And then I guess there's some sort of coordination with whatever arrangements need to be made for that.
So Mayor, if you have a desire to go, I understand that registration opens on the 19th of April. So if you can let us know and then we can get you, they do fill up fast.
So we're timely, but not too soon. So.
So, so maybe take a poll for me right now, who wants to go?
I think it would be good for me to go this year. So I wouldn't mind going. Let me just double, double check the.
So Mayor, Councilmember Bell.
The dates.
Councilmember Branstadter.
And it said Tuesday, the 20th, right?
So you don't need to be there until Wednesday at noon.
Okay.
It's in June.
Yeah, I think I can go that date.
I saw all of your hands go up.
And when does it end? It's Friday morning it ends?
So it ends on Friday at noon, but I usually don't. It's up to you if you want to stay. We'll send you a link to the agenda. So like for me, I go to this every year. I show up about, you know, 10:00 in the morning on Wednesday and I leave at Thursday night.
That may be my case as well, because I've got another, you know, multiple events on Friday is.
So that's kind of the most value of the conference right there. Like Tuesday night is there's like a dinner and a social event. So if you're interested in that, you go to that.
Do they have snacks?
Yes, Mayor, they have snacks. I think they have chicken on a stick and something wrapped in bacon.
I'm sure. Yeah. Okay. So put me down for that probably the
But no claims are.
Two nights. I got to be back on Friday because I've got multiple events all day Friday for some reason.
It looks like I got five confirmed and one on the cusp. All right. And then do you all want to drive over or do you want to fly over?
If the tickets are inexpensive, I'll look at flying, but if they're expensive, I'll drive. But if we look.
Usually, that's what I do. I check to see. And usually, the last few years, it's been more cost-effective to fly and then just take an Uber. So.
So if Ms. Schumacher can take a quick peek at that this week, that would be great. Okay. And the last thing for me is I'm going to be gone this next Monday. So Deputy Mayor, you get to wield the heavy but abundant gavel for the study session coming up. So I will be gone on April 10th for spring break. Exacerbating climate change with a flight to Hawaii. So let everyone know. Single-handedly disrupting the planet with my coach ticket. So unless there are any further alibis for the good of the order, we're adjourned.